Thank you, Rob. I'll call our council or committee of the whole meeting rather to order. Is there any declaration of interest related to any matter on this agenda? Not seeing one, you can declare it at any time, of course. We have a delegation this morning and I'm going to try to get this right, but Andre Zavorgi? Zavor again? Zavor again, alright. He's going to, he has a presentation this morning regarding peak oil and rural transition. And I just, I will remind the speaker, you have 10 minutes. So, welcome and the floor is yours, sir.
Greetings in the love and light of the one infinite creator. I'm Andres Vorgan and today I'm presenting about peak oil and rural transition. This is Rice that Energy's global oil reserve outlook. It's one of the most detailed and reliable sources of oil reserve information. And since last year, it's declined by half a year in proven reserves and one and a half years in proven reserves. And we have about eight and a half years remaining. If you look at either the proven or the probable and with a range of about five to 16 years. And so Hubert predicted it a long time ago and but he predicted a smaller peak. However, with the updated metrics, we're still going to have a half peak production in about 2035. And there's a kind of different estimates of how long it'll last. Alberta oil is a good example. So we peaked the production in 1998 in terms of our natural gas and oil for conventional sources. And even though we continued to drill as much as we could, we didn't manage to increase it. So our peak wells was in 2009 and all tar sands are based on natural gas in order to be viable. US shale is what's currently powering most of the world or most of the growth and production. But the shale wells are also limited, just like any field. And they're, they have the well spaced at like 100 meters apart now. So they're cannibalizing production. And in terms of the oil price, some people claim that the oil, as we get less oil, the price will go up. And then they'll be able to get the more difficult things, but actually the oil prices dependent on money supply. And as we know, with high interest rates, the money supply goes down and so the price of oil goes down. People are living in tents, they can't afford gasoline. So Limits to Growth Study was published in the seventies and it kind of predicted all of this. And so it seems like we're right on the money here. 2015 was our peak net energy with the lowest food prices in the world ever. And since then, they've been rising and increased food insecurity. Now, what will be the future? We're not 100% sure, but some say we'll peak in terms of total liquids, including natural gas liquids by 2027. Some say because of power law distribution, we may have a steep decline. Unfortunately, we do not have enough minerals for a green energy transition. It would take hundreds to thousands of years at the current mining rates to mine enough. And we only have eight left or 16. Where are we? We're in scarcity industrialism, so EU, since they've sanctioned Russia, they're ahead of the curve. 55,000 companies have closed in France alone. They can't even manufacture condoms. So most of their heavy and medium industry is shutting it out. And so Eroy basics, basically Eroy 14 is enough to pay for arts. We have that in the nineties and then enough to pay for healthcare. We had that in the 2010s and now we don't have quite enough. And the school system, it's kind of variable. And but we may have already lost it some, but we need to have enough to pay for truck drivers and farmers in order to maintain our society. And we may cross that boundary in the 2030s. At which point if there's no food in the stores with governments being in cities, it becomes a difficult proposition to continue. So Eroy of different renewables are insufficient. And this coal and gas thing over here, you have to take into account that this was based on a certain time. Now with that we have less reserves, the Eros of these numbers are going down. Nuclear, especially thorium is possible, but we don't have enough reserves to do enough for everybody. We will, if we were to transition fully to nuclear, we'd only have 10 years of reserves left. So where we headed salvage economy, so after the scarcity industrialism, we'd be going salvage economy where people would be living kind of like this, going to cities to collect the scrap, to take them to the rural areas where they can make them into tools and implements. And so there's four, based on mass streams of the future, there's four different lifestyles. So one of them is the urban like this. One of them is like living like the Amish. Fifty-six is the life expectancy because it's very hard. And now there's also, you know, if you go far up north into the northern Ontario, you can live a hunter gather lifestyle. It's actually easier than the Amish and they have a life expectancy of 70. But then there's also the new age Sylvan food forest communities, which have a life expectancy of 89 years because all the food is on site and it's easier to produce since the, once the trees are planted and producing that they will produce for tens to hundreds of years. So this is a summary of what can work. And here, for example, for a family, you need to have one to two hectares per capita. For a family of six, you'd need six to 12 hectares. And these are some possible ways of breaking it down. Optimal farm size based on global data is five to 10 hectares, so 12 to 25 acres. Church of community of 60 would have enough to also support bovine or equine transport like a horse or a cow. Because each horse or cow uses as much land as a person. So you wouldn't, not every person would be able to have their own horse or cow, but 60 would. And with a village of 360, you could have a biogas facility. So if you all, in terms of the sewage disposal, they all get their poop together. They'll produce enough biogas to power one van for say a weekly trip or emergency or something like that. Or like the paramedics, so that would be on the county level. And a neighborhood would also have markets and stores. So they'd be big enough for that, but also could have a bio F F F T process there for biofuels. Like you could make gasoline and diesel and things like that, like one, each neighborhood would specialize in one of those. But it's about 18 liters per ton, 180 liters per ton that you could produce. So in a city of 55,000, you could have thorium industrial manufacturing and a county would be able to do railroad and communication networks. So on the federal level, the recommendations are freeing ups. We have like 87% crown lands in Ontario, so freeing that up for 20, 10 to 20 hectare lots. And then the recommended policy provincial would be to have a land protection act. So per capita land ownership would be capped at 10 to 20 hectares in South Ontario and the surplus sold citizens. And can lobby through the AMO or something like that. So recommended policies for the county would be allowing encouraging sustainable practices. Thirty to 50 meter offset with a hedge to allow for a diversity of lifestyles. You don't have neighbors complaining, also to protect from roving bandits because there's increasing rural crime since people in the city are not able to provide for themselves. County radio, fiber optic and consider rail. Recommended policies municipal to make minimum lot size of a hectare for a single person occupancy. It's just so that because if they're living there, they should be able to provide for themselves, grow their own food and firewood and affordable housing and temporary housing permits to enable residents to live on their land while they're building more permanent structures because we have that housing crisis. And encourage formation of community associations such as churches and villages to foster collaboration and resource sharing. And so, well, I, how am I helping? I'm coming over here all the time and I email you guys Friday mornings. You can check your spam, I don't know. And then I run an IT business and I've got a proof of concept tree seedling business. So I know all the food things, food trees we can grow here and I go to a local men and night church. And so, yep, that's the end of the presentation.
Wow, well, that's great. You went through a lot of stuff there in a hurry, so congratulations. Interesting presentation. Are there any questions for Andre? Scott or Councilor Greg, sorry.
That's all right. Get a lot of it. I just want to thank you for the deputation here today. I, I think there's actually a lot of truth in your slides, in the information that you put out there. I think humanity, we don't want to address that particularly. We're all about what's good for us right in here and now. I remember being in high school, it's getting to be longer ago now and projections at that time in geography and sustainability was oil reductions by 2025, 2028, like those were projections back in the early nineties. And I don't think we're that far off. We're nowhere close to the, the transition where we need to be. And I don't think we want to address or recognize the potential outcomes in civilization, once we actually hit, hit that, that point in time where those necessary fuels for our existence are really diminishing. So I think it's great, the emails and the information that you put forward. Keep doing it. The more people are aware and ultimately every piece of plastic that we don't use is the most important contribution that we can make. Every time I see schools wanting to put air conditioning in because we have seven hot days a year. That's the wrong choice. We have to reduce our energy consumptions in so many ways because we can't continue going on the trajectory which we've set forward. So thanks for the presentation today.
Thank you, Councilor Greg. Councilor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Worden, and yeah, thank you for your presentation today. Certainly thought provoking and we do know that, I know they've always said we're, you know, growing up is the last barrel oil, nobody will ever be able to afford it, they always say, right? So because it'll be the last one. But I had a tour of the oil sands in Alberta in 2017 and that was a bit of an eye opener. But as I understand, Alberta has, I think, the third largest reserve, something like that in the world. But the easy oil is gone. It's the hard oil now that, and so with the tar sands, you have to solidify it and plus access is a little harder. And now I understand that there is a pipeline that will be opening up at some point into the west coast, but that's leaving Canada. But certainly we live a carbon based economy for, from our heating to our fuels. And we are, there is that transitioning starting to happen. And you know, there are stuff like nuclear and hydrogen and other possibilities, but it's not that. When you call it the super bullet or what you want to call it. So we're, but it is, we do have to keep thinking about, about, and I guess the other question is, is, is the world's population continues to grow too? Which, you know, from a food perspective, then I will say that I know a particular large farmer that is looking at investment in further, further north. I was talking to somebody there just when we're down at Roma, past New Lisker into the Cochrane region. And there's an area there that they are looking at opening up for food production. And that's a key thing is feeding the world as well and how that works. But it's still not based on carbon based fuel that makes that dirt turnover and stuff. So anyway, thank you for your presentation, but it says something that we got to keep thinking for our next generation and our grandkids and our great grandkids. And yes, sustainability and survival is important as well. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? I'll give you a, yeah, sure, go ahead. Yep.
Okay, okay. To respond to Greg's comment, so actually in terms of the waste, I think it would be a, in, because of the salvage economy, it would be a good idea to have a local landfill in the county. I know we have one in Southgate. And because those, that would be where a large amount of the future resources are because it's very difficult to say smelt iron ore, especially now that we have depleted most of them. But it's much easier to say go to the scrapyard or the landfill and get, especially scrapyards would be very good because then you could get that metal and then repurpose it for something more useful. Or you could even melt down a lot of different kinds of plastics and then repurpose those. And in terms of the oil situation, so in the tar sands, what's important to know is that the Eroy of the tar sands is 2.5. So it's not even enough to truck the fuel. So we are using gasoline and diesel to truck the fuel and we're actually using natural gas in order to get the fuel or the tar out of, to melt it out of the sand. You have to have 10, I'm sorry, five tons of sand and three barrels of water. And then you have to have enough natural gas to boil those three barrels in order to get one barrel of tar sands out of our current tar sands. And so it's, but I do foresee that we could either rail or waterway that tar sands later in the future for things like plastics, if we need it. And in terms of the population, they did have a population graph in the Limits to Growth Study and they do foresee it also declining. Now, the mass streams of the future, they, with their projections of, they projected 2,500 people to the years, 2,100 to 2,500. And they found that 2,100, there was a 94% population decline. And that is consistent with historical collapses such as the Bronze Age collapse when they ran out of tin. There was also 94, 94% decline in, well, the rural areas for sure. But then it goes back up in the 23, by 23 to 2,500, it rebounds to like 30%. So that would be several billion instead of around a billion.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions? Don't see any, so thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate you taking time to come to county council. Thank you. So moving on, we have the consent agenda there. There's a number of items there. Does anyone wish any of those removed for further discussion? If someone would make a motion to receive those, Councilor Hutchison and Councilor Matrasovs, all those in favor, that is carried. Thank you. Items for direction and discussion, the first is our report on green development standards. This is the January of this year update and we have Rebecca Denard here, our manager, climate change initiative. So welcome Rebecca. And oh, I need, someone would, what do we need to do? Receive this? And so I need a mover and a seconder to receive. Councilor Nielsen and Councilor Apples. Very good, okay. Rebecca, welcome and the floor is yours.
There we go. Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, happy to be here today, talking, there's two reports from the climate department. And our first is about an update on our green development standards. So what are green development standards? These are measures for developers and builders to create thoughtful and innovative developments using sustainable design. It's based on principles to guide development at the planning level and focuses on the community as a whole. It's a critical tool for municipalities to achieve their GHG reductions, targets and adapt to climate change. It's also identified as the community action 11 in our Going Green and Gray, which is one of our five key next steps. So this has been done in several places in Ontario. Some places with completed green development standards are the town of Whitby, the town of Halton Hills, township of King, town of East Wilberly, city of Pickering, city of Brampton, city of Toronto. And they're also in progress in the Waterloo Regional Municipality as well as the town of Calladen. And that was just my, my quick overview. I probably have missed some along the way because it's happening in many, many places at this point. So our project is a collaboration with Dufford and Wellington counties to create a unified green development standards across three upper tier and 24 lower tier municipalities. So the key activities for this project is going to be outreach and engagement with key stakeholders through presentations, workshops, women ours to advance the creation of a consistent framework. And having a unified green development standards for this whole region will really help the development industry adopt this new, these new approaches, rather than a piecemeal approach where there's different standards in different places and they have to try to adapt to different, different things in different places. So staff have engaged a consultant, which is Urban Equation and the Planning Partnership. They did the development standards in both Whitby and Pickering through an RFP process. And we started work on this project in Q4 of 2023. Each county is contributing 75,000 of this project that was allocated, I believe, in 2023 budget. But we're spending it over, over time as the project progresses. So some of the benefits of, of green development standards, this is an interesting segue from the previous presentation. So this is going to be some of the solutions to those problems. To reducing greenhouse gas and energy consumption, reduces dependency on vehicles, improved water management, green space and biodiversity, and also increases our climate resilience. Some of the social benefits, improving air quality, promoting active lifestyles, that mixed use and affordable housing, which is another goal from Going Green and Gray, and it promotes community design that really embraces cultural heritage and culture. Economically, it increases property values, reduces municipal infrastructure costs, makes a longer lasting building stock, creates affordable energy for the residents of the houses and creates jobs in the, in the construction and design of these developments. Okay, so this is the, this is the exciting part that's still a little new. So we have a conditional offer from a federal funder. This is contingent on successfully negotiating a contribution agreement. And the, the potential funding is up to 445,600 and extends this project to March, the 31st of 2027. We're expecting to have a draft contribution agreement available for us to sign in, in 2024, in our February, just in few weeks. And then what, if, what will be reviewed by staff and if agreeable, we will sign, we need a bylaw authorized by the warden and clerk to sign this contribution agreement when it is available. So this contribution agreement will include the schedules which we developed, which outline our project deliverables, timelines, budgets. And then the rest of the agreement will be fairly boilerplate legal from it, which will be the same and consistent around all the other projects they're funding. So not a lot of wiggle room in that one. So that's what we're, we're hoping to do today is to, to get the authorization to sign that contribution agreement so that we're able to accept the funding and move forward with the expansion of this project. So this is what this extra funding is going to be able, enable us to do beyond what our initial investment was going to give us. So we're going to have some additional consultations with stakeholders around the gaps and challenges of the current system, potential incentives of what we need, and then really developing the criteria that we're looking for in a green development standards. There'll be additional training and certification opportunities. This would be for staff, for tradespeople, for developers. So really trying to get people up to speed and offer that opportunity to get to where they need to be. Also a talent and business attraction plan. This will be working with our economic development departments in all three counties, potentially as well as consultants to really bring in the, the people and the businesses that we need to, to implement this green development standards. We're also hoping that this project will be an inspiration to others. So a playbook of resources that we will develop for this project, that we will put into a, a good package that will enable other small and two tier municipalities to follow in our footsteps and also implement these standards. And we hope to be able to share these learnings at some of the conferences that we have going on. So potentially at FCM or at Roma or at the Aclis Sustainable Cities Conference. Obviously we have to be invited to those, but we're, we're hoping to have the content available. It also, this is possibly the most significant upgrade that we would get with the funding, which would be a two-year contract person who would be at Gray County, but serving the whole region. And this would be someone to really aid in implementation. So be that the point person, though, if staff, if developers, if anybody have questions about how do we do this? What's, what am I supposed to do here? What do I put in box 24? This is the person that they can call and find out and really help them to understand what we're doing and why we're doing it and get, facilitate that process. We'll also have annual recognition events to really celebrate the great work that's being done in green development in, in the three counties. And yeah, so next steps for this, we are hoping to sign that contribution agreement with the federal funder in February of 2024, so in the next few weeks. We have an all-staff virtual information session coming up on March 22nd. That's to really introduce the project so that all staff understand what it is we're trying to do. There's an in-person public visioning session on March 27th. This is the chance for the public to give input about what do they want to see in terms of a sustainable community. There's also a development industry information session that will be scheduling for them to have their say about what they want and what, you know, to get them informed. We have additional, those additional feedback and workshops in April and June, hopefully to create a draft of the green development standards over the summer and then get feedback on that draft again from the development, developers, public staff. And then hopefully we'll be here with a finalized green development standards presentation to council before the end of the year of 2024. So that's, that's the project and happy to take any questions before we move on to the next one.
Thank you, Rebecca. Are there any questions related to that report? Councilor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Worden. Good morning, everyone. Thanks, Rebecca. You spoke about trying to avoid piecemeal. To me, this feels like piecemeal, you know, because we're doing it three counties. Why isn't this a provincial or a federal initiative? You listed a number of different municipalities that are already, you know, doing this development. But if it's above and beyond the Ontario building code, are we going to be imposing upon our builders additional requirements locally that maybe in a neighboring county, they wouldn't incur? And we're going to drive business away from, from our municipality? So when you mentioned piecemeal, this just feels like piecemeal to me. And I just wonder why we're getting involved in something that in my mind is a federal or provincial responsibility?
There we go. Sorry, yes, great question. So what we've heard from the provinces is that they are moving in this direction. They are looking to work with municipalities to step up the Ontario building codes so that it matches the federal code. And they're looking to, basically we're getting ahead of the game. So instead of be, having to play catch up, when the province moves to a more stringent building code, we will already be at or beyond that, that standard. They are working actively with municipalities to do this. They just move a little more slowly than we can as municipalities and ready to follow up.
Just to build on Rebecca indicated, so the national building code, so federally, it has been updated to, to apply some of these principles. As Rebecca indicated, the, the plan is going forward that the provinces will update their, their codes as well to align. So this project would look to at least align to some of the federal codes with the anticipation that the provincial codes will also be updated. We anticipate hopefully in the next few years. So that way there will still be that consistent overall framework that's been set at the federal level in terms of those, those codes. We also want to make sure it works for, in this case, for our, our county and our municipalities for Gray County. So the importance of having consultations and discussions with the development industry, the local development industry, Georgian College, the, some of the consultants, some obviously local municipalities, the chief billing officials, inspectors. It has to work for Gray County. So, so as Rebecca indicated, it is a bit to get ahead of the game, to be prepared for these changes because we anticipate these changes will be happening in the next few years provincially, but all aligned to the federal code. So that is the consistent framework. So to try to, to, to match that going forward. So we hope that through this project, we'll be ahead of the game, so to speak, and be able to start implementing these things because it's cheaper to build right off the bat than to retrofit after the fact. And so if we can incorporate some of these principles right at the time of building, we think it's going to be much more energy efficient. Therefore, those energy costs for the homeowner are, will be less as well as also working towards reducing greenhouse gas emissions, which will meet some of the targets that have been set by council. So, so that's why the plan is to work at least with the three counties to create again, a real green development standard that will work for, for our counties and our municipalities and our, our developers. And so that's the, that's the intent of this project is to work that out through that process.
Fair enough. Councilor Matrasovs and then Councilor Apples.
Thank you, through you, the chair. And I, I would like to just take a bit of a different perspective on what Councilor Mackey has just introduced because certainly I concur, we certainly, when it's something that we all need to solve at the same time, we want to look for the greater, the greatest mass to be able to do that. But from our perspective, this is bold action number nine of our integrated community sustainability plan in the town of Blue Mountains. And we recognize that it didn't make sense to be doing nine different efforts. It made much more sense to work on the county level as a start. So what I would hope is that it actually uplifts our development community that if, because remember there's a sliding scale between voluntary and mandatory categories as well as a timeline. So what I would hope is that it actually uplifts our development community that if, because remember, there's a sliding scale between voluntary and mandatory categories as well as a timeline. You know, if there are good practices in there that are voluntary now, but then when the national code finally comes out, everything settles, then then, you know, there's there's a a migration of which pieces then need on an upper level to become mandatory. It it is actually going to be helping us here in Gray County, both from the municipal side as well as um as well as from our developer side to get familiar with the changes that will be coming, get ahead, as as we've heard, get ahead in this case, because then we can be that voice at the table, too. So my question through the chair over to staff would be, um how do we make sure that the fact that we would be taking this kind of initiative to be at the front and say, we know this is the trend and we want to be able to put our input in to make sure it's made in grey, it makes sense for Gray County and our developers that are that work within here? Um how do we make sure then that that kind of experience that we're doing upfront is part of that negotiation table at the provincial and the national level?
Rebecca?
There we go. Gosh, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh yes, so I think that the 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 tools for that is going to be that that playbook and those presentations that sort of come with this funding. This funding is enabling us to sort of create a toolkit as we go so that we have these resources that we then have, we can share through the the various channels um at the provincial and national level. So that the story of this project doesn't just stay in Gray County, that it becomes something that is an inspiration and a and a resource for our neighbors to to move forward. Uh I mentioned Waterloo Region is also working on this at the same time. So we have, we're sort of moving coordinating with them potentially to raise the standard and and work um to get that to get that forward as a first step. And then just having this project, uh it's one of the first that's really addressing this in small communities, because it's going to look different. Green development standards look different in Gray County than they do in the city of Toronto. So we can't just sort of grab somebody else's and slap it on. We we need to really have a considered approach of things that are going to work for us that are tailored to our communities and then potentially would work for similar communities um that are outside of county and around the province.
No, I I agree with Rebecca that the um, you know, we want to through this, through this project, to be able to share some of those best practices. And that's whether that that's with our neighboring counties or the provincial level um or through some of those uh other um through AMO, through other channels. Um the more we can share some of our experience, especially when we're applying it through a lens in in rural Ontario uh for smaller uh smaller township, smaller municipalities, we think uh that this this project will be able to provide some of that um what works, what doesn't work uh uh concepts to to others. So that's what we're hoping to be able to achieve through this project, for sure.
Thanks, Randy. Counselor Eccles.
Um, thank you, Rebecca, for timely bringing this up, but how close are we to understanding or where the green development standards are? Are they? Maybe I missed that your presentation of, are they set? We're already done? Or is it a provincial government that is going to set them and then the Ford's going to be in reverse? I think I heard that once this week already.
Rebecca?
There we go. Okay, yeah, so the project is to create a made in grey green development standards. Uh there are existing models from other places, but those are sort of our background research. We look at what's been done in other places and then put our own together. Uh and that's the process that we're going to be working through with with our staff from the lower tiers and from ours and from development industry. Uh so the 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 timeline for that is we're going to be doing all of those input sessions over the in the over the course of the spring. And then our consultant, who's drafted these standards for other places, is going to take what they heard in all of our consultations, go away, create us a draft. Uh that draft should be ready by the end of the summer, and then we would bring that back to the the stakeholder groups and say, hey, what do you think? Did we, what needs to change, what needs to come in, what needs to come out? And then we refine those through a process of working with staff and with councils. And then at some point, we get hopefully by the end of this year, we're back here presenting, this is what we think the standard should be for Gray County. Oh, actually, for the whole region, we're trying to get it to be consistent across the whole region so that we would present that and then they would be adopted uh into bylaws and official plans as of, once they are, once they're drafted, based on that consultation process. Right?
Is that all right? Go ahead.
So the hiring of the staff would be after all of that work comes into play? Is there that those got to dovetail, is there a provincial or federal standards that our standards would have to develop?
So we we are we're looking to go beyond what is currently in the provincial standard, and we'll be looking at what, if if there's changes in that as we go along, we would you know, incorporate that into our into our plan. So we need to look, keep it, keep an eye out what's happening at the provincial and the federal level. But then we're we're really trying to make a made in grey solution for for these green development standards. But makes sense.
And just to build on that further, um you know, as as we know, the the Ontario Building Code is sets kind of the minimum standards. Um so there are some things that obviously from just a best practices, from a a cost efficiency perspective that could be incorporated that although goes above those minimum standards that could be easily incorporated, that in the end results in some reductions in terms of energy consumption. So um and and therefore uh lowering utility costs uh for for those homeowners and business owners. So so that's what we want to explore. But again, it has to be a made in grey approach, has to work for for our development industry, has to work for our our local municipalities when they're applying the the code and the inspections as it relates to this. Um there are provisions under the Municipal Act and the Planning Act that allows us to consider these uh initiatives. Uh in fact, the province confirmed even with all the changes that were happening to the Planning Act that the provisions as it relates to applying sustainable design standards to to buildings is still protected. Uh is still protected interest and and ability for municipalities to apply. So so we want to look for that opportunity. We want to make sure it's it's, like I said, works for for folks in Gray County. And 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 that's why we're hoping to obviously work with this project and and work with each of the local municipalities and 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 others to make sure we get this right.
Counselor Kenner, please.
Thank you. Uh would I be wrong to uh uh make a parallel to the accessibility rules? Like, we've all been playing catch-up in every municipality going like heck, trying to catch up and be ready for two thousand and twenty-five. Is this a case where we have the opportunity to be just a bit ahead of the curve and not be running as hard as we've been running on that particular farm?
Yes, that's a great analogy. We really, it it it's so much better to have a plan and and have the consultations done and have an understanding of what we need in our community before the province starts telling us what we need to do, because we have that, we know, if we've heard from our development industry, if we've heard from our communities, this is what a green development standard needs to be. Then when the province comes and asks us what we want, or we have the opportunity to tell them and we don't get something imposed that was designed for Toronto, that was designed for places that aren't here. We have the opportunity to say, hey, look, this is what we've got. It's working here. We are ahead. We've developed it and we're not playing catch-up or trying to fit ourselves into a box that wasn't made for us.
Counselor Greg, did you have?
Yeah, go ahead. Uh thanks for recognizing me, Warden, and and through you, just a a couple of quick questions. So it's, you know, it's common knowledge that building standards have variability. Just think earthquakes. So it's, you don't build long-term care homes in Ontario like you would in Vancouver. Um one thing I'm wondering about when you, when you go through this exercise and you've got different colleagues and peers and comparators, is that right now, and just coming back from Roma, arguably, the number one item in front of the population right now is affordability. And what I would like to know is what is the impact on home construction affordability that can be um taken from from your other colleagues or how you're going to plan on incorporating that in, because it's not so much the interest rate that is the problem on people right now, six percent, five and a half, seven, whatever. It's the amount of money you're applying the interest rate to. That's what's devastating people. Um so I guess that's what I'm keenly interested in is what are, how are we moving forward with the affordability as a key um component of of what the action plan is going to to be tailored to?
So yes, that's a great question. And certainly top of mind is to make sure that we're not, we're creating housing that is both affordable and sustainable. Uh it and it really comes down to looking at lifecycle costs, because potentially, you would need to invest a little bit more in the house or the development initially. But every single homeowner that lives in that house after that initial construct will have lower energy costs, will have less upkeep and maintenance costs, will not be burdened with the cost of retrofitting things after the fact to meet ongoing standards or to try and reduce their energy costs. So it's a little bit of consideration and design and effort upfront can save a lot of 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 challenges down the line when you're getting a house that's moving potentially to as it, the house ages, you know, it's it's not the people who bought it in the first place. It's all those other homeowners that you have going down the line, who who will benefit from it being built right in the first place.
Counselor Body.
Thank you, uh Warden Mellon. I I think, you know, in the in the long run, big picture, uh having better green standards and having more efficient standards is uh uh the the right thing to do. However, a developer doesn't give a crap about what it's going to cause somebody to uh heat their house. They care about their profits right now. I don't know. I've kind of found from my experience being in On Sound, we require things like wastewater, water, uh curbs and those types of things. Developers much happier to go outside the city of On Sound to put in a uh take a field and put in thirty-two homes on uh wells and uh and uh and septic beds. They're going to go to where it is cheapest for them, and you've got to be so careful what you add to them. It it's unfortunate I don't see Bruce County involved in this, because, you know, one of the developers that owns most of the developer lands in Graham Bruce can build over there. And if he can put an extra couple bucks in his pocket versus in ours uh or or in the house itself, uh I think that's a natural thing for a developer to do. So I think we've got to be really careful trying to uh team up with Kitchener, Waterloo and other places uh on our own. I think it's great that if the whole province did it, the whole country did it. I think it's needed, there's no doubt. But I think we've got to be careful in the short term that we're getting into competition with our neighbors and we're uh we're losing because we've added the standards. Um one of the things that is going on that will influence the developer is the uh CMHC money coming federally to be able to do uh multi-res. Uh a few years ago, the formula was uh about the number of units um that were at a a an attainable price. Um and then, you know, example of Strathcona School that Barry Belt uh that did that. His next development over in Twenty-Eighth Street in On Sound, it was a different formula that did include um green energy type things, efficiencies, accessibilities, and as well as affordability. So the formula changed and uh it it allows a developer to be able to apply for those funds and get a reduced uh interest rate, which allows him to build. Um we've heard from all of them that it's been very tough the last couple of years. Um uh with the cost going up of uh materials through uh COVID, so we're fighting that. Uh at the Clean Energy Frontier Summit uh on on Friday, we heard from The Economist that um Omers um that was talking about things are going to be down for a little while because of interest rates beque- because of the cost of uh building. The developers can't afford to develop just as quickly. The market isn't there to support them. So I think we've got to uh dance that fine line between increasing costs for developers, increasing costs for home buyers and uh and doing it in the lo- long run, uh the right thing in the long run, but not painting ourselves into a corner that we're not competing with municipalities next door. That'd be great if Bruce County was involved with this. Uh I don't know how you get them involved or why they aren't, but um developers will go to where they can put more monies in their in in their pocket. So it's a challenge.
Yeah, uh at the time when we, when this project was uh initially a concept, um we did reach out to to all all the neighboring counties. Uh I think the timing just wasn't right at the time for Bruce County. I think uh since that time, I think, you know, they're they're making some further advancements on on a number of areas in terms of um sustainable energy and looking at uh uh different things. So um so I know that they're they're very interested in the results of of this project um and want to obviously continue to monitor it. And we'd be happy to include uh folks from Bruce County as well as Simcoe County and others in terms of some of those consultations and workshops, just so uh again, they they have the benefit of of hearing from from local developers and others uh about how we can implement this collectively throughout our greater regions. So um yeah, so we'd be happy to incorporate that as part of this. Uh but like I said, just at the time, it just wasn't the right timing for them. But I think uh um yeah, I think the timing might be a bit more right for them to be able to look at something like this either not necessarily right away, but maybe in the future as well. So I know, like I said, I know they're very interested in the results of this project.
Counselor Eccles.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So I guess to that point, is this like I understood and from the recommendation that it's a green standard project in partnership with Wellington and Dufferin. But in the last five minutes, all that I've heard is the maiden grey. Is this a partnership program or is this totally maiden grey? Because if we're going to sell it as a partnership, we better start now not to hear what I'm saying?
Yeah, so uh yes, it it is a tri-county effort. So we're trying to get a unified standard for this whole region to to sort of mitigate some of the issues that that Counselor Body was bringing forward of having different standards in different places and giving the opportunity for developers to sort of shop around and find the best deals. Uh so we're trying to get it at least the same in all of our counties. Uh I guess I was thinking of maiden grey because it's we here are concerned with what happens in Gray County. Uh of course, we want our neighbors to all keep up and be great as well, but more uh concerned. But we we are looking for a unified standard for at least this whole whole region and then giving the opportunity, hopefully, to to bring once we have the standards made, it would be potentially easy for some, a Bruce or a Simcoe to um adopt, you know, look at what we've done and just make some tweaks and then it will work. It'll be a maiden Bruce solution for them. So.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any other questions? Call, I have a mover and seconder to receive and to authorize staff to bring the bylaw forward. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. The next report is the uh regarding the Rural Recharge Project uh speaking to Electric Vehicle Charging Network Partnership. So Rebecca, that's your report as well. Do I have a mover for that motion? Counselor Carlton and Counselor Pringle. Thank you very much. Rebecca.
There we go. On to the next. So this is another collaborative project, uh again with uh with some of our neighbors. So this began as the Regional EV Partnership Project, which is now called Rural Recharge. And this is a collaboration between Gray, Bruce, Dufferin, Wellington, Huron and Perth Counties. The project was to expand the availability of public publicly available EV charging infrastructure in our region. And the purpose was, again, to fill gaps in existing infrastructure with a coordinated strategy rather than a piecemeal approach of adding one by one charges over time without a without a strategy. And this project uh will support Community Action Seven, which encourages the adoption of electric vehicles, which is one of the five key next steps in going green and grey. So I'm sorry the text is super small on this, uh but I will, I will read it for you. So this is some of the project roles. Uh it's a little complicated, so I wanted to put the arrows about who connects to who. So the municipalities uh or or private landowners, they will own the properties where the charges are located and they will be entering into an agreement with Ivy once the charging uh once the funding is secured, and we'll get to Ivy in a moment. Uh then we have the Steering Committee, which is made up of members of staff from the participating counties. So I sit on that. It meets biweekly. Um and we really direct the the strategy for the project. Uh we also have a consultant, which is Community Energy Associates. So we direct them and give them um information about what we want them to be doing. Dufferin County is the lead organization on this project. They have the agreement with uh CEA and the other counties have an agreement with Dufferin. So that's how those all kind of fit together. So Community Energy Associates is our consultant on this project. We've been working with them since kind of fit together. So Community Energy Associates is our consultant on this project. We've been working with them since, uh, twenty twenty one. They were the consultant that developed the network strategy in the first place. Uh, and we were, they were selected by the Steering Committee through an RFP. They developed, uh, the RFP that secured Ivy to, uh, to, to be our, our provider for this project. And the Steering Committee had input both at the developing the RFP and as well as selecting the component. They act as our liaison between Ivy and us and they hold the agreement with Ivy. So that Ivy Network is the, was unanimously selected by the Steering Committee through the CEA's RFP process. They will own and operate the charging infrastructure. They're also applying to MTO funding, uh, on behalf of the project. And once the funding is secured, they will enter into an agreement with the municipalities and, and landlords. So that kind of gets the full circle of how all these players connect to each other. Okay. So site selection, where are we going to put these things? Uh, the phase one of the project was in twenty twenty one, twenty two, and identified seventeen community locations as a baseline network. Uh, the idea was that we wanted to have, make it possible for people to go anywhere in the region and never be too far away from a charger. So it reduces the range anxiety, make sure that people feel confident they can just charge their, they don't have to stick to one particular route that they planned out in advance. They can kind of go where the spirit moves them and what they find interesting and explore the area without these, these constraints. So, uh, some sites were added because of additional capacity and others were dropped because another organization put in chargers. So that site then became redundant for the needs of the network. And just at, at the community level, we had several sites identified within the community and the preferred locations were, were decided on based on proximity to amenities, natural dwell time, travel patterns, accessibility of the parking and the availability of power for the chargers. Uh, and now that we are at the point where we have the address um, selected, this exact site plans have not yet been developed. So this is exactly like where on the parking lot, where on the property the, the chargers will be put. They will be developed to later time and they will be brought to the staff for approval so that we make sure that we're putting the parking, putting the chargers in a place that works for staff um, over the long term on the property. So these are the proposed sites. Uh, this has been a somewhat of a, of a moving target, um, as, as things develop. Uh, so this is, there's a, there's a slight change from what was proposed, uh, in your reports. The sites in, in Gray Highlands, we had two sites, one in Flushington, one in Markdale under consideration. Uh, they have now decided to just go forward with the Markdale site. We were having some challenges finding a location in, in Flushington that we had the necessary approvals to move forward with the application. So we are, because Flushington and Markdale are fairly close, we could figure we can, we can get away with just doing the charger in, in Markdale for now. There's always the potential to expand this network and go, uh, go further, uh, in the future. Uh, I'd also like to speak to the sites in, in Georgia Bluffs, both in Springmount and, and in Shallow Lake. So these were sites were not additionally identified as being required for the base network, but the township of, uh, Georgia Bluffs already had them budgeted and they were going to put chargers there anyway and wanted to really be part of this project and realize the benefits of joint procurement and, and being part of this, this network. So, uh, those sites and only those sites are being financed by municipality. So they are putting in the capital costs and, uh, applying Ivy is still applying for the MTO funding and once the sites are built, they will operate like all of the other sites in, in the network. So how is this, how are we, how is this getting financed? Uh, Ivy is going to be responsible for, uh, all the costs of installing, operating and maintaining the chargers. And this would include any upgrades to the electrical system that need to happen and the ongoing, uh, power usage. It will be coming, they, they will get their power directly from the grid. It won't be coming through any municipal panels. So there's, there's no burden on the municipality to bill them for power. Uh, the public then pays a fee to Ivy to charge their vehicles. This is Ivy's business model. They, um, that's how they cover their costs for installing all this stuff. Uh, the municipality would enter into a five-year agreement to allow Ivy to operate the chargers on municipal land. Ivy is currently financing the draft agreement with their legal team and that will be viewed by the municipalities. And if agreeable, that'll be brought back to council for approval. Uh, the agreements will be entered into once there's an offer of funding on the table. So this is the, this is the MTO, uh, funding we charge on, which is a, uh, an MTO program, which provides funding up to fifty percent of project costs. So Ivy will be applying for this funding and will hold the agreement with the MTO. And this really removes the administrative burden of operating the chargers from the municipality. Uh, we did consider a path where the municipality would apply for this funding, uh, and they would get a seventy-five percent of project costs covered. But in that case, the municipality has to be responsible for owning, operating, ensuring, reporting, all of the duties would fall on the municipality. So we decided that that wasn't in the spirit of this project. So that plan ha- got changed so that now Ivy is going to do the application and is going to take care of all that administrative, uh, burden going forward. So because of the nature of this funding, each location requires a separate, separate application. So it's probable that out of the thirty or so sites we are applying for, potentially not all of them will be funded. Uh, so what happens if a site isn't funded, uh, potentially Ivy would assume a hundred percent of the costs of, of, uh, doing it just to fill in the network. Uh, again, they would look to enter into an agreement with the municipality if they were going to go down that path. Uh, if we don't get a lot of sites funded, we may be pursuing the federal ZVIP funding, which is, uh, the federal funding for electric vehicle chargers that's supposed to open in the spring of twenty twenty four. Uh, obviously if that is the path, it's going to delay the, uh, the installation because if we apply in the spring, unlikely that we'll be building in the summer of twenty twenty four. So that will be the path if we really don't get enough chargers funded through the MTO to really fulfill the goals of the project. So if we only get four or five out of the thirty we apply for, then obviously we're going to need more to, to get the project, um, really to accomplish its goals. So we'll see what happens about the funding. Uh, the other possibility is that the site might be considered redundant if the MTO funds a site from another project that's across the street or down the road. We may decide that, well, that charging needs are taken care of in that community and we don't need to proceed with putting in a competing site right, right in the same neighborhood. Uh, so once the, the, once the MTO has the funding decisions, that's when we will be seeking to enter into agreements with the municipalities and, and moving forward with, with the project. So just a little bit about the community investment of this project. So the Gray County's total contribution to recharge, rural recharge to date is just under ten thousand dollars. This was our contribution to hiring the consultant, uh, CEA who has really coordinated the whole, the whole business. The project could lead to six level three and twelve or more level two chargers being available for our community as well as any tourists coming through. Uh, on average, a, a level three cost between a hundred and two hundred thousand per port to install and a level two costs, uh, about ten thousand dollars per port. So just over a million dollar investment, uh, from, from Ivy and the MTO and the community. We are successful with all of our sites. And yeah, that's, that's that one and happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Rebecca. Councilor Keveney.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, everyone. And a question, Rebecca, if I may. How was it decided where a level three charger would be placed as opposed to a level two?
That's a great question. So that was, uh, that was in the initial strategy of, of where, where to put what. And the thought was that we were trying to put um, level threes in places where we're looking for a quick turnaround where someone would maybe stop for lunch, stop for a quick uh, visit to a, a library or something that you're not potentially spending hours at a place, whereas the level twos were put in places where it's more natural that, that, that the people would be staying there for a longer period of time. Obviously, level threes would be great if we could afford to put level threes everywhere, but the, the decision was really like, where do we need people to, to feel like they can get a fast charge and get on their way? Yeah.
And just to, to build on what Rebecca indicated, so as, as Rebecca noted, as part of the original study was to look at based on where the chargers exist today, what gaps need to be, um, put in place in terms of what charging locations to be put in place to fill some of those gaps. So having, uh, certain distance between level three chargers and level two chargers from a, from a overall network perspective, again, to help ease some of that EV charging anxiety that, uh, that Rebecca indicated when people are traveling to and from various destinations. So that was part of that analysis in terms of looking at where should level three chargers be located and where should, uh, supporting level two chargers also be located. So, so that's what was looked at and analyzed as part of an overall network framework across all those counties to try to fill some of those gaps.
Any other questions? Councilor Mack.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And through you, Rebecca, is there any, uh, rent going to be paid for the addition of these chargers on municipal properties? I guess I and I guess I asked that question, um, you know, if any other private, private enterprise was looking at, uh, putting, uh, infrastructure on our property, we'd be looking at some sort of agreement where they would be paying some rent to us. So I'm just wondering if rent, uh, will be supplied to, uh, to Gray County. Thanks.
That's a, that's a great question and, uh, it's one we've been, we've been talking about with Ivy. Uh, they the, their, their business model is contingent on being able to make those chargers profitable and it's quite borderline for them in these um, smaller, less off the beaten track locations, um, at least compared to a, to a stop, you know, in, in, um, off, off a major highway or, or in downtown Toronto. Um, the, the business model doesn't incorporate them paying rent to us for the, for the spot. Uh, and, but we are looking at how, how does that work within the legal framework of what a municipality needs to, uh, to make this agreement work. So that, that is, it's, it's an ongoing question. We were, um, trying to get an answer sorted out before this meeting and, uh, have not yet gotten, we were, we're looking to get a draft agreement from, from Ivy and that will sort of contain more of the details about how the agreement with the municipalities will work. Um, but we're looking, their, their priorities, obviously those, those applications for the MTO are due at the end of the month. So their priority is to try and get the applications in and, uh, and then we will be looking at those agreements as soon as possible after that so that we, we, we address any of those questions of, of bonus saying or potential unfair practices. We want to make sure that we're, we're thinking about that.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any other questions? You know, call a question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Rebecca. So we have some closed meeting matters, but I see it's ten after eleven. Why don't we take a ten minute break? We'll come back at, well, eleven twenty. We'll come back at, well, eleven twenty. So I apologize, I, I felt like I was still at the Roma Conference and felt compelled to speak to everybody I met in the hallway. So we'll, uh, we'll bring this back to order here soon as Rob gives me the thumbs up. There we go, thumbs up, we're back in order. And, uh, we have a closed meeting matter, or three actually to deal with. So the motion is that the committee of the whole does now go into closed session pursuant to section two, three, nine of the Miss Black two thousand and one, as amended to discuss labor relations or employee negotiations, specifically, uh, an ops sue matter, Greg Gables and Lee Manor bargaining upset limit request. The second is labor relations or employee negotiations, specifically service level reductions, and a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land, specifically a motel purchase for emergency shelter. Would someone care to, thank you, Counselor Body, Counselor Hutchison, any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. So we'll just wait until the, uh, so I got the thumbs up from Rob, we're back in open session. We have one final matter to deal with here. And it is the motion coming out of closed session. I can confirm that in closed session, we only dealt with those issues, those issues that were listed on the closed session motion. So here is the motion to be considered by council. If someone would care to move that motion, Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Nielsen, thank you. Any discussion or questions? Counselor Apples.
You know, I've struggled with how much the county or upper tier, any of the property tax, there should be getting into this type of community housing options and whatnot. But when we go back into the history, this is a place that Gray County has been in for a hundred plus years, more than a hundred plus years. There was a facility in Markdale for long before I come into this, uh, world, and it was there up until into the nineteen nineties. We've kind of band-aided ourselves back and forth and never have replaced that facility. This is an option that, you know, for various reasons is still needed in a community, and it's something that Gray County has always had. I struggle as, you know, can we not get beyond it, but we won't. So that's why I'm in favor of this. It's not something new, it's just a replacement, that's where I'm looking at it, to service the community needs. Thank you.
Actually, count, thank you, Counselor Apples. Anyone else? Counselor Body.
Thank you, uh, Warden Mellon. I've got to say that I had some reluctance or have had reluctance. And, um, although enclosed, uh, the report from staff was so detailed and covered off every single objection that I had and gave me, uh, satisfaction of that we've looked at all the costs, we've looked at all the, uh, uh, looked at all the financials, looked at it from every angle, and it's satisfied, uh, my concerns. And so I want to say thanks to staff for that. And, uh, I really was very detailed and very deep in, uh, in, in financial analysis and, uh, and gives me the satisfaction I was looking for. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, I will call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? That is carried. Thank you very much. Uh, is there any other business in front of the meeting today? Not seeing any, any notice of motion. One final motion, Counselor Mackey and Counselor McKay. Motion to adjourn, all those in favor? That is carried. And let it be known that I did the entire meeting and never screwed up the Mackey McKay thing once. First time this. There's.